Today is Wednesday, June 10th, and the time is 6:00 PM. And the Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our land use public hearing. We have all three commissioners with us tonight. And I'm going to start with asking everyone in the room here to make sure you silenced your cell phones or turned them off. And we are going to be taking testimony and the applicant's testimony by WebEx tonight. Any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We're going to go ahead then, and we're going to start with administrative. And this is on 201-201115-S, Winters Run subdivision number six, final plat. And this is Mark setting in for Diana. You don't look like Diana.
Hopefully so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
You do have before you tonight the Winter Run subdivision number six. It is the final plat. Staff has reviewed the application and has found that the applicant has met all of the conditions of approval and as well as meeting the state code and is also finds that the final plat is in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat. There was a correction that needed to make. You'd asked how many lots the final plat consisted of. It's 25 residential and four common lots.
Twenty-three.
Excuse me, 25 residential.
Oh, I thought you said 23 before. Okay, so we went from 105 to it's 25.
For getting it down correct. It's 25 residential, four common, for a total of 29.
Okay.
So with that, Madam Chair, I would stop and field any questions at this time.
I've read through it, and I don't have any questions. Fellow commissioners?
Same, read through it and satisfied?
Okay, then I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I do have a question, actually. It's not necessarily to this particular plat, but it is, you've mentioned that this subdivision is right next to the future Pearl Jensen Park. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner LaCiano, that is correct, yes.
Okay. And are we currently collecting impact fees on behalf of the city of Boise for that park? How is that working?
Madam Chair, Commissioner LaCiano, yes, we do collect park impact fees based on billing permits.
Okay. All right, we'll help with future discussions. Okay, great. In that case, I will go ahead and make the motion. I will move to approve application number 201-201115-S, Winters Run subdivision number six, final plat, and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is, have a motion carries. All right, before we get into unfinished business, Jason, on the WebEx, how are we going to see them since we're up here and we're usually down there?
Are your computers on? Are you able to see?
Not yet, it's just showing the agenda.
Oh, she's got a different screen than we all have.
You can push twice for the big screen. Should be able to see.
Got your space. No?
All righty.
You got everything you need.
I think so, yeah, I just wanted to pull up the additional exhibits so people.
Now we're good, Jason.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start with unfinished business and lead a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Madam Chair, I make a move to remove unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is, have a motion carries. So we're going to open the public hearing on project number 201602053-CU-PR-TE, Kruger Gabriel. Gabriella, Gabriel, not really sure how to pronounce that. So we are going to start with our staff report, Sam, and then we will move to the applicant, who will have up to 15 minutes. And then we will move to individual testimony, and people will be able to provide testimony on this time extension for up to three minutes, and then we'll allow five minutes for rebuttal. Okay, Sam, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the commission, before you tonight is an application for a time extension for an approved private roadway is proposed to originate from Sandy Point Lane. The hours of the use are to be Tuesday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Saturday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Sunday from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And they will be closed Mondays. The applicant is proposing a 2,736 square foot barn with a covered arena, a hay shed, horse runs with stalls, and several shelters on the property. The applicant is also proposing that the private roadway, Stagecoach Lane, to be 24 feet in width and to be constructed with six inches of road mix. The applicant is proposing to gate the private road. This use is to occur on a property approximately 5.16 acres in size that is zoned rural preservation. It's located off of Stagecoach Road in Boise, Section 11, Township 2 North, Range 3 East. Let me see if I can't get a aerial up there. Just one moment. Yep. I can do that here. Okay. Great. Okay. So up there you can see the project site, that 5.16 acre property. Here's Stagecoach Lane. So again, this is for a time extension. The original approval of the application occurred on January 12th, 2017. An administrative time extension was granted in January on the 31st in 2019. This administrative time extension would expire January 12th of this year, 2020. As evidenced in the record, the applicant has applied for a board-approved time extension, and that was submitted on January 10th, 2020. The applicant's detailed letter states that they were involved in a lawsuit defending easement and access rights. The applicant also is nearing completion of an access easement from the Idaho Department of Fish and Game, and they are finalizing contracts for the private road construction. So there's the site plan that was submitted as part of this application that shows where the private road is proposed to terminate. And I do have some site photos for you. So onsite, this is looking northeast towards Sandy Point Lane, down what is the unimproved Stagecoach Lane easement.
Sam, can you be sure to project your voice so that people in WebEx can hear you?
Yeah. So this photo is taken from the perspective looking northeast toward.
Sam, we're not able to see anything on WebEx. It's just grayed out.
Okay, let me.
We can see it. We can see it up here.
You can see it up there?
No, because you're seeing that computer, but via WebEx.
Okay.
It's just, it's grayed out.
Let me make sure that the, it's sharing.
So you're sharing edge, you're in photos right now.
Right.
So you have to share, either share your screen or share the program. Again, you're sharing edge.
I see.
So stop sharing.
Oh, I see, okay.
This is all new to all of us. We'll get it.
Okay. There we go. Okay, I see. Got it.
It working now?
I believe it's working now. Jason, we just.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, everyone. So yes, this photo was taken from the perspective showing, or looking northeast towards Sandy Point Lane on the unimproved Stagecoach Lane. This is looking northwest down Stagecoach Lane on that portion of the road owned by Fish and Game. And then this is looking northwest along that bend radius on the, along the subject site in the Stagecoach Lane easement there. And this is looking towards the site where it encroaches onto Stagecoach Lane.
Okay.
So based upon staff's review, let me stop sharing, actually. There we go.
Edge is what you were sharing before.
Right, okay, I see. Am I still, I'm not sharing that now, though. Right, okay. Well, staff concludes that the project complies with Ada County Code and does recommend approval to the board at this time.
But just to be clear, the code that we're looking at is just for time extension.
Well, staff concludes that the project complies with Ada County Code and does recommend approval to the commit, to the board at this time.
But just to be clear, the, the code that we're looking at is just for time extension code?
Yeah.
And they've met that by January 10th date, they've met the timeframe?
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, yes, you're considering tonight a time extension and they have met that by, by meeting, or by applying before it expires.
Yeah, this isn't about the application. The application was approved with conditions of approval. This is just on the time extension tonight, and we will only take testimony on the time extension tonight.
Correct, it's for a time extension.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely. That being said, staff would recommend approval based on compliance with those standards and will stand for questions from the board at this time.
Great, thank you.
Can you minimize out of this?
Yeah.
Any questions for Sam?
Can you go back to WebEx?
Any questions for Sam?
About this time.
Yeah, great. Okay, so Jason, I have, Ms. Kruger, I'm thinking I should have her first?
Yep, she is the applicant.
Doesn't state that on this list, so I'm gonna bring her to the, I'm gonna write that in. When I give it to Sandy, you'll know. So we're gonna start with Gabrielle or Gabriella Kruger. Are you on with us?
You guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you guys?
Great, thank you. So we're going to give you up to 15 minutes to provide your testimony here tonight on the time extension. And then we will allow any individual testimony tonight on the time extension. And then if there's a need for rebuttal, you'll have up to five minutes. Does that sound okay?
That sounds great, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead then and we'll start the time now, so go ahead.
All right, well, thank you, Commissioner, first of all, for meeting with you tonight. Nobody regrets more than I being unfortunately asked for this time extension. I'm hoping by the end I'm able to demonstrate to you why I am asking.
Can you speak up a little bit, please? We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, is that better?
Yep, that's better.
Okay. I'm sorry, just to reiterate, I'm, I'm sorry that I am taking more of the commission's time tonight with my time extension request. I am hoping to demonstrate why I've had delays, what have come as a delay, so hopefully prove that if it were up to me, I'd be up there and operating right now and it wouldn't be taking up more of your time this evening. The original, excuse me, the original delay was approximately six months. And it was precisely because the Idaho Transportation Department had a huge question mark as to whether or not, excuse me, whether or not a left-hand turn lane was necessary to, with the intersection of Sandy Point Lane. The contact I had with the ITD was letting me know that there was a lot of communication with one of the property owners up on the flats while they're investigating this intersection that was threatening legal action. So he was very upfront with me that they had to give those their absolute due diligence and put as much time into it as necessary to deem that their road would still be safe with the number of trips I was proposing. After six months with a lot of collaboration between the Ada County Highway District, Idaho Transportation Department, Ada County, and the Fire Marshal, the number of trips they deemed safe for that intersection came to 290 trips per day. My application is only asking for 20 trips per day. So with that, we are able to continue on with just some, some peace of mind knowing that that intersection would be safe for, I mean, we would need, we're at 6% of the capacity that they were able to approve me for. The second major safety concern that had to be considered was whether or not Sandy Point Lane was safe enough for emergency vehicle access. Within a couple of days of the original approval, I had the Fire Marshal up and he investigated the road. And his comments were that there is a good line of sight all the way up the road. And as we were investigating the road, we witnessed a 30-foot triaxle flatbed truck, excuse me, navigate Sandy Point Lane without any issue. He also noted that there is plenty of space for vehicles to pass each other and that the lane, and that there are plenty of pullouts. So therefore, his comments were that the road would more than support the fire apparatus that they were questioning it could support. Now, on a quick note on Sandy Point Lane, we are more than aware that there is that tight hairpin turn going up that road, and it's a contingency that we have taken into account with our business model and with our plans for the business, in which case we will never ask a trailer that is too long to navigate that corner. We will never have a horse and trailer or rig coming up the road that we are not aware of.
Ms. Kruger, Ms. Kruger, I'm gonna pause you just a minute for a moment. The hearing tonight is just on the time extension, so if you wouldn't mind just keeping your testimony directed to the time extension and why you need the time extension, I'm not sure that this is relevant to that. But if it is, continue. If not, let's, let's just get to the time extension piece. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So after the six-month delay of the Transportation Department coming up with a number of trips allowed, at that point, we realized that there is a legal issue regarding my easement. I did have a legal easement by implication to my property based on our continuous ownership of the parcels, based on our historical use of the road. We've been using the road since 1976, and based on our intention to continue using the road. Despite the, the strengths to our argument, the property owner at the time, Jason Stively, realized that the easement was not recorded, so he had legal recourse to take me to court in order to fight my easement access, which was fine. Because he was from out of state, he bumped it up to a federal lawsuit in the hopes that the cost and time delays that that would present would essentially end my project. Luckily, I had a strong legal team in my corner, but it took a good two and a half years to eventually be able to settle out by him essentially selling the property to a good friend and client of mine who therefore gave me the easement. That all went down in November of last year. After that, we were able to continue the negotiations with the Idaho Fish and Game Department to get the easement across their road property as well, and that was acquired about two months ago. As soon as we had that, we had COVID. We were hoping to get the bank loan going as soon as we had that easement. But with the COVID delays, we weren't able to start the bank loan process until about two weeks ago. But we are currently in that process right now, and we are hoping to break ground in hopefully less than five weeks.
Okay. So you're asking for what type of time extension?
Once we break, the contractor estimated running within 10 months.
We, you were, you were cutting out. Could you repeat yourself, please?
I'm sorry, the estimated time for completing the building process is about 10 months. So I say realistically, probably a little over a year.
You need to give us a specific time, please, that you're asking for.
18 months.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for now? You're, you'll have an opportunity for rebuttal after individual testimony.
No, I, that's major for the delays.
Okay. Certainly have had some hurdles. Okay. All right, so Jason, we're gonna go ahead then, and I'm just gonna go write down the list in order of what I was handed. Is that okay, Jason?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna start then with Jesse Polastasio. Jesse, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Hi, I can hear you, Jesse. How are you this evening?
Good, thanks.
Good, thank you. You're gonna have up to three minutes to provide testimony, and we're taking testimony tonight only on the time extension. This is not an opportunity to comment on the application itself or the conditions of approval, but only on the time extension. So if you're ready, go ahead.
Okay, you know, that really kind of put a crux on what I was gonna say, but I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to voice our family's concerns about the extension. We, we neighbored the Trumpet Golder and where the boarding business is gonna be placed, and we asked that the application be denied. The.
We're not, I'm sorry, we're not talking about the application tonight. We're only referring to the time extension.
Sorry, we, we requested the extension be denied. It's been four years running since Ada County Development Services and Partnering Agencies met and gave extensive requirements to be completed. And with that, that's a large amount of time that nothing has been done yet that we can see. I think that realistically is all we have to address the extension.
Thank you. Will you stand, will you stand for questions?
Sure.
Okay, great. So I just have a question for, for Sam based on what Mr. Polastasio just mentioned. He said it's been four years. Can you give us the exact time of when the application process started so we know the amount of time that this has been in the works?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the original approval of the application occurred on January 12, 2017. So I reckon that's about three and a half years.
About three and a half, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Polastasio?
No, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here tonight with us. Okay, next up, we have Isaac Andrew. Isaac, are you with us?
Uh, just give me one second.
Sorry, Jason.
No, you're good.
Isaac? Andrew, Isaac? Okay, hi, welcome this evening.
Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
It's Andrew Isaac and representing my partner, Keela Pollak.
Oh, great, okay. So, so you're going to be speaking for both of you?
Yes.
Okay, all right, sounds good. So you'll have up to three minutes to provide testimony here tonight, and we're taking testimony tonight only on the time extension. Again, this is not an opportunity to comment on the application itself or the conditions of approval, but only on the time extension. Thank you. So go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, on the time extension, a few things that Ms. Kruger mentioned. One is the ACHD needs to take another look at Sandy Point Lane because it's narrow, no outlet, no safety barrier, no guardrails, and includes a steep hairpin turn that only one vehicle at a time can occupy. So moving on from that, the Idaho Transportation Department did the study for that turnoff of Highway 21 in 2017. Since then, the traffic has quadrupled on Highway 21. That's a dangerous situation. Another situation that needs to be reviewed is, Ms. Kruger spoke about the Fire Marshal. We were just notified by the county that we're not inside the, any of the fire departments. We've been notified that our house and neighboring houses are out of the fire district for Ada County. And
Try to keep your testimony just to the time extension itself. You will have an opportunity when she comes back in with the conditions of approval being met. All of those conditions need to be met, and that includes apparently signed by all the owners of the properties that will be encumbered by the private road easement. So you'll have an opportunity at that time to give you, provide your testimony on the application itself. But again, tonight, it's just on the time extension.
Okay. We request that the extension be denied because some of the things that were brought up by Ms. Kruger have not been addressed, such as the fire district, so we would like to have this extension denied. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Will you stand for questions, please?
You bet.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Isaac? It looks like Mr. Malloy.
Actually, Mr. Isaac, if, if you're declaring that those, some conditions have not been met, would that not be justification for her time extension?
I couldn't, I couldn't understand you, sir.
If, if some of the conditions, if, if your claim is that some of those conditions have not yet been met, would that not be justification for the time extension?
Well, we're being told that some of the conditions have been met and they haven't been met. So what are we to believe? You know, I, I believe the extension should end, and I believe the neighborhood feels the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Okay. So it looks like Mr. Isaac was also providing testimony for Keela Pollak. So I think we'll move on to Terry Pickens, Manwiler.
Can you hear me?
Uh huh, hi, Terry. Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I already submitted our general comments and writing, but I wanted to touch on just a couple of things. In this particular case, the application, the sheer passage of time has rendered things different on Stagecoach Lane and Sandy Point Lane. A lot of things have happened in the last three years that maybe would have had a better impact on the original findings, the fact and conclusions of law that were passed for her conditions of approval. In that time period, again, the traffic patterns have changed on Highway 21. They've increased dramatically. The, the, there were two substantial fires right in the area that would have raised a little bit more concern. The findings, the fact and conclusions of law that have been proposed for the council today specifically just adopt the former findings and say that those findings are in compliance with the Ada County Code. And I would disagree that they are in compliance with the Ada County Code. The findings of fact that this commission would be setting forth, moving forward from Ms. Kruger say that she does not have to pave that stretch of road to her commercial enterprise. And again, given the sheer passage of time and the development in that particular area, the, the road should be as required by code paved. And so what we would ask is that the extension be denied and that she be required to revisit that specific condition because the passage of time has rendered that specific provision to be a challenge for this application. If, you know, three years have passed and nothing had changed and everything was just, you know, status quo, that would be one thing. But it is no mystery or no shock to hear that development in the area has increased, that fire hazards have become more extreme, and that the traffic patterns have vastly changed. So because the time has passed, this council or this commission should deny the application's extension and require Ms. Kruger to go back and have those specific provisions that are now a safety hazard and a concern for all of the residents up there were readdressed before the Development Services. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any questions from Miss Pickens?
Actually, not for the witness, but Jason, perhaps you could clarify. She's, she's obviously making an assertion that the findings and facts are evidenced from a considerable time back. Is that in fact the case?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Malloy, so the findings of fact were approved, as Sam stated, in January 2017. Since that time, our code has, has not changed, and the requirements for private roads and paving have not changed. And here again, as the Chair mentioned at the beginning, we are, this is an application for a time extension.
Right.
It is not an application to review or to appeal or the original application.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that, that the, the assertion made was clear or not in that there have been no other constraints that would have been put on the applicant at this time. But that, that answers my question and clears up the, the time extension issue for me. Thank you.
Yep.
I'll hold my questions for now.
Okay. I have a question for staff. So, and this may be for legal, but staff may be able to answer it so we don't have to consult with legal. So could we, is there a possibility, and I'm saying, I'm not saying I want to do this, but could this board add an additional condition of approval if we were to approve the extension? Is that a possibility tonight? No, yeah, I'm asking staff. They're, they're looking it up, so be patient with us just a moment.
So, Madam Chair, our code 876 does allow, it states that the board in granting the time extension may, in its discretion, amend, delete, and/or add conditions of approval for development requirements as necessary.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Pickens. Nice to hear from you.
Thank you.
You bet. Next up, Jason, we have testimony from Anthony Jones.
Mr. Jones, are you with us?
Nope.
Mr. Jones?
Oh, hi, sorry, I apologize. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I didn't think I was part of the line for the longest time, so I would like to make a comment regarding. so I would like to make a comment regarding the statements by the State Fire Marshal.
Before you start, could you please go ahead and state your name for the record?
I apologize, Tony Jones, at 9880 Florida, East Highway 21, Idaho 83716.
Thank you, and you'll have up to three minutes to provide testimony here tonight, and it's just on the time extension only. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I would like, regarding the time extension, I would like to point out that the applicant has had, going on four years, to get this right. And part of the problem was that, in the initial application, the applicant had no visible route to a public right of way. So the whole premise of the initial application was flawed from the get-go. And certain pieces of it make no sense in the context of other applications that have come forward since then, namely that what this application is asking for is a new private road on top of an existing private road. This entire area has a huge problem of overlapping property lines, easement lines, and so forth. And it would not be in the county or the applicant or the residents in the vicinity to go forward with the original application, given the various conflicts. What I am suggesting is that there needs to be something on the order of a timeout in order to reconcile all those different property lines, private roads, and so forth. Because as the situation currently is, it may get it off the county's docket, but it will simply go into the courts to be sorted out at a different level. And I don't think that benefits either the applicant, the residents of the area, or the county in general. Thank you.
Okay, would you please stand for questions, Mr. Jones? Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you for joining us here tonight, we appreciate your testimony. Okay, next up, Lindsay Schubert.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Hi, is this Lindsay?
Yes, it is, this is Lindsay Schubert. I live at 9800 East Highway 21.
Okay, it looks like we have a Chris Schubert, too. Are you related?
Yes, that's my husband, and I was going to pass my time off to him for this evening.
So you're...
Yeah, basically, we came prepared to kind of talk about the application and disagreements with things that have been shared with us. We're new to the area since November. I would say we don't really have much as far as, we just recommend not to proceed with the time extension, based on what we've been hearing of the area and how long it's been in progress, for, you know, three and a half years. Just seems like there'd be more done to complete that prior to now.
Okay, so you're asking the Board to deny the time extension?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further testimony?
No, not tonight.
Okay, would you stand for questions? Any questions?
Yes.
For Lindsay or Chris? I'm assuming Chris is there with you?
Actually, he's not, he's out of town.
Okay. All right, any questions? Okay, thank you so much for providing your testimony here tonight, appreciate it.
Would you have Chris on as well?
Okay.
Chris in at this time?
Chris, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Great, thank you. Can you go ahead and state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's, Madam Chair, my name's Chris Schubert, 9800 East Highway 21.
Okay, and we just heard from your, from your wife, so you know the drill.
I do, I do, and I want to emphasize on what Tony Jones said as well. We're dealing with easement issues in the area as well, so we don't have easements and access to our property. And so we feel there should be a review of how everything's laid out in the whole area. Apparently, it was established illegally in the early 70s, late 60s, and don't feel like we know what, where the true property lines are and so forth. It's been surveyed, and it seems like it's a big mess in the whole area. And for that reason, it shouldn't, I mean, all this should have been done by now, and we don't feel like there should be a time extension.
Thank you for your testimony. Please stand for questions.
No questions.
Commissioner Lachando?
Well, I guess I'm just sort of interested in what your proposal would be. If there was a timeout, would you be proposing to, you know, retain an attorney that would assist with all of the property line adjustments, easements? Would you be looking to form an HOA? I just, I'm recalling, we had a somewhat contentious application from this area, maybe about a year ago, and I just don't, you know, want y'all to be back here.
Yeah, we, I mean, we're, we're dealing with issues ourselves as well, legal issues at this time, and I can't imagine all the other issues that, you know, we've gone through and to this day. And so, I mean, we, we're just not sure on what, you know, is entitled and so forth. And I think everything needs revisited with the existing private road that's there and if Sagecoach is even a real road. So that, that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you, Chris, appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you.
You bet. Okay, next up, it looks like we have Marlene Eno Hendren.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Marlene, how are you?
Good, I do have a presentation.
Okay, can you state your name for the record first, please?
Marlene Eno Hendren, and I am representing Douglas and Barbara Eno and David Hendren, 9924 East Highway 21.
Okay, great, and you'll have up to three minutes, and this is again, providing testimony on the time extension only this evening. So when you're ready, do you know how to share your content?
I, Ada County Code 8-7A-5, which is notice to the public. And specifically in that code, it's F4 and F6. F4 is signposting requirements of the applicant, and the wording, the letter size required for a foot by four-foot sign, the minimum type size is 1.5-inch. F6 in the code is sign maintenance and repair, which shows that all signs shall be continually maintained in a state of good appearance, security, safety, and repair during the hearing process. So this is one of the signs that is currently posted. This one is the east sign. The fonts do not meet the requirements in code. There is some extra text on there, it looks like it might have been from, from a previous sign. And then Samuel's phone number is obscured unless you get right up on it. This photo is just the measuring tape that shows that the sign does not meet the type or that is required. The other sign on the west side also does not meet font requirements. The web address is cut off, so it's not correct. And then there's also some illegible or missing text. The illegible text, not sure if that is for tonight's meeting or not, could not read it, so don't know if that's something that we should have known going into this meeting. A concern is, is that, you know, the application is from 2016, this isn't the first time we've had a public hearing notice posted. However, the applicant and Development Services should know signage codes by now. So for today's extension request, you know, neighboring residents can't expect county development and building requirements to be met when Development Services cannot be relied upon to do something as simple as verify the failure of the applicant to comply with something as simple as Ada County Code detailing public notice signposting requirements. So until such time as the applicant can fulfill Ada Code application requirements for an extension on a sign like this, and until such time as Ada County Development Services can't fulfill its duty to the public, this application must be denied. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Will you stand for questions, please?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Eno Hendren?
I guess, is so the, is your statement that the signage that you're declaring incorrect specifically about the extension or specifically about the application?
It's about the extension because your sign, this sign doesn't, none of your signs meet code. So, I mean, you guys have, you're asking people to approve an extension when I don't even know if I'm getting all the information from your sign that's required to know what to expect in this meeting tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Lachando?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your testimony here tonight. And I'll have staff at this time, staff, I don't know if that's Sam or Jason, but if you wouldn't mind clarifying for this Board, the obligation of Ada County Development Services when it comes to posting, the applicant's responsibility, and then our responsibilities, if our responsibilities were met.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, let me, should I pull up the code section? In Ada County, we do rely upon the applicant to, posting occurs 10 days prior to the public hearing, and that's actually the reason why it was tabled from last time. We also require that...
So can you, can you back up? So why was it tabled from last time?
Because the sign was not, the, the text that you saw taped up to the sign in the previous testimony was, was not added in an adequate time to provide surrounding property owners 10 days' notice as required by code.
Okay. So basically, for the same thing, it's the applicant's posting, but it's our job to go check that, correct?
Well, actually, it's a good segue into my next point, in that the applicant is required to provide what's called a signposting certification that details that information, along with it are, are photographs of, of the signage to, I guess, review for compliance with the ordinances.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and then also, can you go ahead and, and share with us our obligations to send out in the mail to neighbors? What does that look like? What process did we go through?
Yes, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. In Ada County, we do, we are obligated to notify surrounding property owners. It depends on the type of application that they're applying for, as well as the zoning. In this particular instance, I believe it was 1,000 feet from the property boundaries, and so all the residing property owners were notified via public, or, you know, post in the mail of the project description and WebEx details and things like that, so they can attend the public hearing.
Okay. So the folks that signed up to testify tonight were all made aware of the time extension tonight?
That is my belief, yes. Yeah, that's how they were made aware of the website to register for the hearing.
Okay, and Commissioner Lachando?
Madam Chair, Sam, could you speak to the questions about font size and the contact information being obscured on the sign?
I can, yes. Madam Chair, Commissioners, if you'll allow me a moment to navigate to Ada County Code.
Did we receive the certification along with photos from Ms. Kruger?
We...
Of photos that she sent?
They were attached, yes.
And you would have reviewed those?
I would have, yes, that's correct.
And while you're looking for that, this is the second time that this is, second time that this has happened? Her posting was inadequate last time?
It, it just wasn't posted in compliance with the 10-day requirement. It was posted, I believe, on the 10th day, and it was understood that it had to be posted at least 10 days prior to. So before, before 6:00 PM that day, which it didn't meet, so we decided to table it.
Okay, okay.
Alrighty.
Any other questions for staff, why Sam's looking us up?
Sam, it's 878.
Yeah.
5.
Okay, yeah, so, let me share my screen, so we can all look at the requirements.
So Commissioner Lachando, do you want to just restate your question?
Well, the last testimony provided called into question whether the new sign met code based on font size and whether the, some of the contact information was obscured. So I would like to understand what staff's process was to assure that it was meeting Ada County Code.
Okay. So, oh, here we are. So is this sharing? Yeah, okay.
Yes, but you need to hide, minimize that box.
Okay, let me minimize the box.
Yep, it's that.
That one?
Yep.
All right.
Got it.
We're in business.
Yay!
Thank you for your patience.
Sam, can you please speak up as well?
Yeah, so the, according to Ada County Code, Title 8-7A-5, Notice to the Public, these are the noticing requirements. So, and, and here was, as I was mentioning before, not less than 10 days prior to the public, we need a sign posted on the property. In this case, it was one sign, it had to be four by four.
Where's the font?
The font, I believe, is, is being referenced.
Didn't that table you just?
In, in the table, yes. This is an example of the required sign specification. So it says, centered at the top of the four-foot by four-foot sign, or, yeah, in this case, in this case, it's a four-foot by four-foot sign, shall be the words Ada County Public Hearing Notice. In addition, each sign shall state whether it's for the Ada County PNZ or the Board of Ada County Commissioners, the date, the time, the address, and the hearing location, a summary of the proposal to be considered, the property size and location of the development, the name of the applicant, project number, planner name and phone number. And each four-by-four-foot sign shall be white on both sides, and the letters shall be black and appear on both sides. This table that you see on the screen is an example of the required sign specifications set forth. So there's some, I guess, stock language and an example of what sizes...
I still don't see the font, is it 1.5 inches? Is the font?
Yep, that's, yep, that's the...
Okay, so is this, did this meet the 1.5-inch criteria?
I didn't, I didn't look. I guess it's hard to scale the photo that I was provided. Generally, we rely on the applicant to, to do that. So it's, I don't have a direct answer for that question, Madam Chair.
So, Madam Chair, so, I just want to, so then, and I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, the certification that is filled out, and I see it here in the report, signposting certification, the photos that are submitted with that, is that the extent of the verification process? I mean, nobody, I just want to confirm that nobody physically is typically going out there and measuring the fonts and things like that?
Correct, yeah, I mean, in the past, I haven't measured fonts of signage. I would, would look to see, you know, that it shows the, the information as depicted in this example of our ordinance, you know? So it does provide all the necessary information for surrounding property owners to be duly notified. In most cases, we look upon a site inspection, we go out to take photos of the property to give the commission or the Board a perspective of the property, and we can inspect the signage at that time. But I forgot my ruler, so...
Well, and the other thing at this point, since it's obvious, I'm looking at this sign, it doesn't say that this is a time extension. It says that it's a commercial, horse-stable, private road application, so that's not correct either. So I think, I don't know if we need to continue to take testimony tonight, I think we really need to table this and go back out for appropriate posting, notification. I just, I don't see that it's been posted correctly, and I would feel not good about making any decisions when we...
Madam Chair, we do have just one additional person that has signed up to testify. I guess I would recommend continuing the, letting the people who have signed up and been a part to testify, and then we can table...
Then we can close the public hearing and then decide what to do.
Well, we wouldn't want to close the public hearing, we want to leave... We want to leave the public hearing open, but table the item to the June, June 24th meeting, which would allow the applicant time to correct the, the signposting.
Much as we don't want to do that, I just think it's probably the most prudent thing to do.
Well, I guess the, to that point, Madam Chair, you know, the folks who did show up here did receive notice, which is the purpose of the sign, so if we were to do that, I would limit testimony in that hearing to people who were new.
Yeah, that would be fair enough. I, I think we've heard good testimony here tonight, and there wouldn't be any need to repeat that, since again, it'll just be for a time extension. So that makes sense, yeah. Okay, so let's go ahead, is that okay with you?
Yeah, and then, and I, just to clarify for anyone still listening online, they, this again is about the time extension, they still have that opportunity to testify with respect to the application itself, further down the road.
And I just, I want to clarify that, because I'm not sure they have an opportunity to testify. I know that there's, they have to meet all the conditions of approval, and one of those is the, these property owners signing off on it.
Okay, right.
So it may not be to testify, but they can still wait.
They have a, somewhat of a say in the matter.
Yes, they have a say in the matter. Yes, correct. Thanks for clarifying that.
Madam Chair, just, just so we're, we're clear, we do require a road maintenance users agreement. However, some of the people that are here to testify would not be, would not have frontage on that road.
Right.
And so, you know, this is their opportunity to share their testimony about the time extension. The time to talk about the application and to appeal the application was when it was initially approved.
Okay, and that did not happen?
Okay.
Yeah, at that time. Okay, that's fair enough, so let's go ahead and we'll take testimony from Teri Coria.
Um, okay. And I, Teri, is that you?
That's me, who's this?
This is Jason, but go ahead.
Hi. Hi, I'm Teri Graham, I'm here with my husband Chuck Coray, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission. We live at 9892 East Highway 21, we are the adjacent properties that is proposed to this commercial riding training facility, we live immediately next door. I, I really respect everything that has been said, and we stand in support of all of our neighbors, Mr. Isaac, Mr. Jones, Mr. Polastasio, the Enoch's, and the Super. We request this time extension be denied for all of their reasons. Two of my main ones are the fire danger and the hazard, and that, just since the application, we only lived here two and a half years, we had three recent fires. I too have horses, and I just fret at how you would evacuate 26 horses. We have the discovery of our neighborhood not being in a fire district, so there's no guarantee that help would be provided to any of us. I don't know what kind of conversation she had with the Fire Marshal, so that is a huge concern going forward with this conditional approval. The road that she also mentioned, Ada County had, maybe it was the Idaho, I don't know what road district or whatever, but the Ada County standards that she's going to have to bring that road up to, I can't even imagine her being able to take upon that task. And then, of course, as you stated in Exhibit A 9D, there's a requirement of our signatures for the property owners that will be encumbered by the private roadies, men and we've all had a discussion, and none of us will be signing. We therefore ask that this request for a time extension be denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Will you please stand for questions? Okay, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here with, with us tonight.
Thanks to all of you.
Madam Chair, I did have Stacy Poliestasio request as well to testify.
Okay, she's not signed up here, is that Jess's wife?
Correct.
Okay. Stacy, are you on with us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Okay, hi. Go ahead and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to provide testimony.
This is Stacy Polastasio, I reside at 9797 in Standing Point Lake, and near proximity to a commercial arena. And I do have to give my opinion on denial of the extension, just for the reasons that everybody has brought forth, that time has passed, and Ada County Development Services set guidelines for protective measures, just for things that have changed. I mean, over the last three and a half years, so much has changed, so now's your time to deny this extension for reevaluation, and that's what I would like to say. And I, and I also have to say too, you know, someone who wants a commercial business would be more diligent and accurate in their applications and, and signage.
Thank you. Will you stand for questions, please? Okay, any questions?
No questions.
I do have a question. Madam Chair, Ms. Polastasio, or Polastasio, want to make sure I get it correct, are you a part of the group that would be, have frontage on that road? Would you be required to sign the road maintenance agreement?
Yes, I, I am adjacent.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. Okay, Jason? We are not going to close the public hearing, we're going to leave the public hearing open.
So, Madam Chair, we do, the applicant is still on, it'd be appropriate to give her an opportunity to rebut.
Let's do that. Sure, Gabriel Kruger, are you still on with us?
She, she is, we're pushing the mute button at the same time. I will let her unmute.
Okay, can you hear us, Gabriel?
I think so, but can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you just fine, go ahead, it's your turn for any rebuttal that you may have with us or for us this evening, up to five minutes, so go ahead.
Thank you. So the first thing going to head on is the signage. I do want to point out that our original hearing was scheduled for March 11th. There was an administrative error with Ada County, the letters weren't mailed out in time, so this was tabled, and then COVID hit, and then it, COVID hit again, and so I think this is the fourth delay to this time extension hearing. The point I want to make is, number one, the new signage that they require on the signs, which includes the WebEx registration-
Can, can you speak up, please? We can barely hear you.
Sorry, okay, is that better?
Uh huh.
Okay. The signage that Ada County asked me to put on the sign to reflect the fact that we'd have to be online, there's too many words to fit on a four by four sign, can't get an inch and a half font without covering up the letters, so we were just kind of doing the best we could to get as much information on there as possible. We also got all the footage on there that Ada County told us to put on, there are any changes to the sign, and all the wordage on the sign was what was dictated to us by Ada County. So if you guys want, that's fine, I just wanted to make those points. Secondly, the road maintenance agreement, legally, my understanding of it is it impacts the property owners across which the road goes, and those property owners are Jim Bailey and Idaho Fishing Game, people that have hit the road, I'm just not sure how road maintenance agreements work with that, but I just want to make it clear that it's Jim Bailey and Idaho Fishing Game that actually own the land across which the road runs. And as far as, it is a mess up there, it is a big giant mess up there, a lot of property lines are unclear, and there's a lot of unclear easements. However, the last few years, three and a half years, I've had an opportunity to at least clear up State Coach Road, our property. Now that is one thing, the road boundaries are clarified, the easements are clarified, so that's one that Ada County has to worry about. Chris and Lindsay Seaver, their property has nothing to do with mine, their easements have nothing to do with my easement. They do have their legal battle ahead of them, I feel for them, because I've been through it, and hope they come out the other side, but I've put in all the effort and time to clarify what my legal rights are and what my access is, which is why it's taken me three and a half years to get to that point. I have a lot of respect for the neighbors, I respect that they don't want to see further development in the area, they are new to the area. I am thankful that there is not massive, massive urban development up there, like there is in the rest of the valley, and my commercial business reflects the end of the development in the area, because all the other properties are landlocked and very difficult to get to. So luckily, it's a small and quiet and safe, guarantee that. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please stand for questions. Any questions for Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
Actually, my question would be more maybe of the Board and, and the staff, is if this Board decides to table this, are we going to ask her to meet all statutory requirements on signage, which would mean the exact lettering?
And what does that look like?
And, and, and I guess I would, this is more way of a statement, if it won't fit on a four by four sign, you may need to go to a bigger sign, but I think if, if you're, just for information purposes, if this Board opts to table this, I don't think you're going to be granted your time extension if you don't meet the statutory requirements of the signage in, in totality.
Okay, Commissioner Lacheyondo?
Yeah, and, you know, I would say, I, I think you've met the spirit of the law in terms of what you've posted on the sign, and, and that is evidenced by the people who are here this evening, but we do need to, when, when something's been brought to our attention regarding the letter of the law, I think we need to rectify it, so I would table it, have you work with our staff, and then limit public testimony to those who would be sort of new to the, the conversation, since we have heard this up to this point.
And I would just like to ask staff, how do we remedy having the online language that we need in there? What is that going to look like? Is that going to be feasible, possible? Have you talked about this? This is new to, I think it's new to all of us, you know, we really didn't think about that with COVID and all the things, the hoops we've been jumping through to try to be accommodating to continue, continue on with our hearings. It's little things like this, then, that come to our attention, so how do we remedy this going forward?
So, Madam Chair, I guess there's, there's two ways, two remedies for it. One, as was identified, the possibility of utilizing a larger sign, so the text would meet that requirement. And then the other, I, I guess, thing to be aware of is, the courthouse is opening back up, and we are looking to transition to hybrid hearings, which would allow the public and interested party to, to attend the hearing, meeting the social distance standards.
Okay. But just the sign itself would need to be larger on her part, when we're going to ask her to repost it, you're going to help guide her on how to repost that?
Yep, we can, we can walk through the different options with her to make sure that it meets the, meets the requirements.
Okay, okay, so we might not need all that language, but-
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, then, I, is the Board inclined to table this and repost? Is that kind of the direction you have?
I'm happy to make a motion to that effect, Madam Chair.
Okay.
If that's okay. Madam Chair, I move that the Board tables Application 201-602-053-CU-PR-TE, Kruger, Gabriel, to our public hearing on June 22nd to afford the applicant time to remedy the, oh, the 24th, excuse me, June 24th, don't come here the 22nd, to afford the applicant the time to remedy the signposting issues.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, thus having a motion carries. All right, next up, we have Project Number 202-000202-VAC Buy Right LLC, and, Brent, good evening, Brent.
Good evening. So Madam Chair and Commissioners, at the May 27th public hearing, we had voted to deny Project Number 20200020-VAC, and directed staff to make revised findings of fact. I have revised the findings of fact to reflect the Board's discussion and decision at that public hearing, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. And this is the, I think we're all aware, this was the property that needs to reapply as a subdivision.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think we've read through it. Any discussion? And there's no testimony here tonight on this? Okay, so let's go ahead and close the public hearing. And any Board deliberation before a motion?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, go ahead and entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the revised findings of facts for Application 202-00020-VAC Buy Right LLC.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, thus having a motion carries. Next up, new business, we're going to open the public hearing on 201-702-545-PR-TE, Louis Lane. And Sam, I think you're back up.
I'm back, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This application is another time extension for a private road. This roadway is to originate from an existing private road known as Area Lane. The proposed private road is to be 20 feet in width. The parcels that the road is to provide access to total 320 acres. The project site is located at North Willow Creek Road, Section 15, Township 5 North, Range 1 East. The applicant, again, is seeking a time extension for this private road approval. The original approval of the application occurred March 4th, 2018. An administrative time extension-
I think for the record, it's March 14th.
It is, correct, thank you. An administrative time extension was granted February 28th of last year, 2019. This administrative time extension would expire March 14th of this year. As evidenced in the record, the applicant has applied for a Board-approved time extension, and they applied on March 11th of this year. The applicant's detailed letter states that they have completed a majority of the original project conditions, and that the two conditions that are outstanding and that need to be completed are for reasons of coordination with surrounding law owners and the financial burden associated with these improvements. The two outstanding conditions include the replacement of culvert at the start of North Willow View Lane, and the application of gravel for the entire length of North Willow View Lane, it's about 840 yards of gravel in total to be distributed over the next six months. Based upon staff's review of the application, staff does conclude that the application complies with the Ada County Code and would recommend approval to the Board as set out in the proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law, and the Board should consider the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing prior to rendering your decision. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Sam?
Did you use the ruler on these signs?
Well, the applicant, bless her heart, bought a brand-new sign, so.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner Lacheyondo?
No, thank you.
Anyone here to testify on this project?
The applicant is with us.
Okay, great. All right, welcome, Louis Lane?
Close, thank you, Lane Louis.
Lane Louis.
Lane is my first name, yes.
Great, thank you.
I didn't, huh?
Yep. You'll have up to 15 minutes, if you need 15 minutes, to go ahead and provide testimony tonight.
Do not, thank you. My address is 9148 Willow View Lane, that's Eagle, Idaho. Sam did a good summary, we had, the reason we're, we're looking for the extension is mainly coordination with the owners for both materials, and we had some issues with easements, similar, I guess you've heard the story before. We were, we had to do a whole new survey and do a lot of things, it just took a lot of time coordinating that, but we have that done, and it's been filed appropriately. We also, because the property is, the majority of the property of the road is owned by Alomir, they wanted us to use some of their materials for the rebuild, and unfortunately, we weren't able to access that until February of this year, and when we went to get it with our flatbed, we, it was not going to work. We needed a 24-foot culvert that was solid, and that was not that. So, that, and, and also, the second item is, when we originally filed this, or this road, we were filing with another neighbor, and we were going to share the expense of this mile-long road, or all of the work that had to be done, and they subsequently have dropped out, and so we're shouldering the burden of the entire thing, and so we, we, as Sam said, we did buy us some, so we could help our farm out, and having said that, we expect to have the road complete within six months, although we are just for, some point where we are looking to just have the extension be for two years. That is all, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Please stand for questions, any questions?
No.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your testimony here tonight. Anyone else here to provide testimony? Okay, then, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, time for the Board to deliberate. Commissioner Malloy, would you like to start?
I guess I have a question for staff, when we do this, when we say two years, is that, if we grant it for two years, is that just from today's date? Or do we need to indicate a specific date?
It would be from today.
Okay.
Okay, all right, any deliberation or questions or comments, Commissioner Lacheyondo? Okay. All right. Any deliberation or questions or comments? Commissioner Laciando?
This one seems relatively easy.
I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. It looks like Commissioner Malloy's ready.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the time extension of 24 months for Project 201-702-545-PR-TE Louis Lane. And as, and based on recommendation of the staff.
Second. We have a motion of second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have Project 202-000-301-AC-A, Tom Moore. Mr. Mark Perfect, you going to table this for us, or? I don't see anyone here to testify.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Yes, staff is at.
Did I open the public hearing on that? I did not state I'm opening the public hearing on 202-000-301-AC-A, Tom Moore. Now you can proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So staff is asking that you table this application to your June 24 public hearing. And the reason, very similar as we've seen tonight, is that the sign posting was not installed in time for the 10-day requirement. So again, we'd ask that you would table this item for us.
Okay. Any questions for staff? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any deliberations? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we table Application 202-000-301-AC-A, Tom Moore, to our June 24, 2020, public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is have it. Motion carries. Next up, we're going to open the public hearing on 202-000-432-ZO, or O-A, Ada County. And this is a zoning ordinance text amendment, and we have Jason up. Staff, to present this.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, thank you very much. I am, let's see, going to share, why is this? So. Okay. Just to make sure that those that are with us can still see what we're talking about. The application tonight is for use code, specifically Title 8.3. F, which relates to our floodplain ordinance and floodplain management. In reviewing our current code, there were some definitions and some parts of the code that were not in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program standards, the NFIP standards. And so we needed to add some definitions. There were some definitions that had been modified through some previous zoning code revisions that we needed to bring the, those changes back. We also wanted to add some clarification to the process, the approval process and the review process. As we've worked through the approval of floodplain applications, there were things like fences, driveways, grading, site grading, that there wasn't clear standards in our code. And so this new code is written in a way so that when we get those applications in, the standards are clear for the applicant as well as for staff that's reviewing the application, the criteria that, that needs to be looked at. We also, we are including some higher standards in this land use code, one of them being the lowest floor being one and a half foot above base flood elevation. So if you're constructing your home in an area that's in the floodplain, and the base flood elevation is 65 feet, we require you that bottom floor to be 66 and a half feet. And currently, we require it to be 66 feet, well, just one foot above. But what this one and a half foot does is it actually gives that homeowner credit when it comes to insurance for two feet. Because when it comes to insurance, they round up. And so it's a minor change. We may, we haven't heard any pushback.
We can save people money, let's do it.
And that was one of the things that, it'll help us as we work through the CRS for adopting higher standards and getting additional credit for that program. But ultimately, in the long run, it does help the, the landowners than the homeowners. We also included some corrective procedures for violations and issues that occur, when they occur, what the responsibility is, the ability to do inspections, and the remedies, the ability for Ada County.
I'm noting this accessory structure issue. I believe we've had to deal with this on certain occasion, not being able to allow to construct an accessory dwelling unit based on the floodplain. So appreciate that correction.
Well, so actually, this correction is, as of right now, we have, there's several different zone designations, floodplain zone designations. Some of those have the base flood elevation determined. Those are the AE zones or the floodway zones. We also have A zones, which the base flood elevation is not determined. Our current code requires anybody doing any development in the A zone to hire an engineer and do a study to determine what that base flood elevation is. I think that's a great standard. It's a great policy to have. However, what we were finding is people, we were requiring people to spend $15,000, $20,000 to do a study to determine the base flood elevation to build a $2,000 to $5,000 accessory structure.
Right.
And so we've removed that requirement just for accessory structures.
Okay.
If it is going to be a dwelling, they still have to do that. And there again, it, that benefits them by determining that base flood elevation. They can get an elevation certificate, which is going to be required for flood insurance anyway. And so it's not specifically accessory dwelling units. It is accessory structures.
Accessory structures.
Yep.
So they can flood their shed.
They can flood their shed.
Boil it down. I like it.
So this is the, I guess, the first piece of, of what's before you tonight. And then the second piece is an update of the maps. And what I have up on the screen is an interactive map that we've worked with IT to create. It's been up on our website for six months, maybe, maybe even longer. As, over the last couple of years, there's been extensive study and process to revise the floodplain maps along the Boise River. And so what we've done is we've created this interactive map that shows where those changes are happening. And, and what needs to happen tonight is the official adoption of the new maps so that we can stay current with FEMA's requirements and with FEMA's maps and not get kicked out of the National Flood Insurance Program by adopting the new maps. And so this, it really is, like I said, a two-piece approval this evening, one for the ordinance and the text, and then the other is adopting the new maps.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Jason? Sounds so impersonal for staff.
I'm going to, I'm going to start rounding up, though. Instead of being five, six, I'm now going to be six foot tall.
There you go.
Six foot tall, okay. Does that follow suit, Commissioner Laciando? You're also going to be six foot tall?
I was going to say, if FEMA does it, then sure.
You're doing it too.
Round and out.
Okay.
All right. Any testimony for this? No? Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And deliberations or a motion?
No, I just, you know, would just make a comment that I know this has been a long time coming, and there's a lot of work that's gone into, you know, commenting, we're numerable years. So appreciate all that you guys have done and feel safer knowing that you're doing it.
With that, you want to care to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that we approve and accept the zoning ordinance text amendment 202-000-432-ZOA. And I don't know what I need to do here. And authorize the chair to sign the amendment. Yes?
All three, all three would actually sign.
Sign, okay.
Yep.
All right.
And he's got it ready for us.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is have it. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, do we, and I want to confirm with Jason, did that take care of the map issue, or do we need a second motion?
No, the, the findings that were presented tonight were for both.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Before we adjourn here tonight, just a housekeeping item, I want to make sure that we have Marlene Enrow Hendren's PowerPoint that she provided, or whatever it was. I'm not sure it was a PowerPoint, but it was an online, that we have added that as an exhibit. The evening, I think we're ready to go home. It's been a long day and a long week.
You're off the record.